Yes, I will call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 24th, 2021. The first order of business is the approval of the February 10th, 2021 minutes. Have you guys had a chance to look through them? Are there any additions or corrections?
I'll move the minutes to be approved as drafted.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Got Tom's.
Was that a yea?
There was an aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next order of business is the following new business. We will hear about the petition of Crosswhite Holdings LLC for a conditional use permit to allow 12 condominium units on the 106,000 acre parcel located at 1240 Greenview Drive. The 12 condominium units would exceed the 600 maximum condominium units approved for the Cornerstone Traditional Neighborhood Development.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. This subject property is owned by Arvone Flow Density Residential and is indicated for mixed uses on the city's future land use map. In, on June 27th, 2006, the city council approved a conditional use permit that established the Cornerstone Traditional Neighborhood Development. And through that CUP process, council adopted design guidelines and a master plan that really governs the development of the neighborhood. However, from its original submittal, from its original submittal, the neighborhood was having a maximum of 1,000 units. The maximum unit yield for multifamily units was set at 600, and that threshold was met in 2017. So there's no other multifamily units available for the development. The unit yield for commercial uses was indicated to be between 100,000 square feet and 200,000 square feet. The development at this time has approximately 80,000 square feet, best I could tell from assessor records. While this proposed building would be in keeping with the mixed-use concept, the development, if it is approved, is very unlikely that the commercial yields that were originally proposed would ever be met. Stormwater plan for Block B was approved when that block was being developed, and prior to any site plan approvals, the developer would have to show that, and verify that stormwater measures were installed to account for the impervious area of this proposed development. The city traffic engineer did not require a traffic analysis for the proposed development, and parking would be available along Greenview Drive and in the adjacent parking lot of Block B. It's unclear to me at this time whether or not the development is being served by mass transit. Our mapping does not show the Greater Lynchburg Transit Company serving the development anymore. I believe in the past, it was served by Liberty University. So that is something we need to research a little more. I did reach out to GLTC but did not get a return email. I think what you're going to hear this evening is a request from the developer to increase the number of units. And what you need to decide is, is if you approve these, future requests come before the Planning Commission and council to increase the unit yields in the development. How far above the 1,000 units are you willing to go? So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Tom. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
Myself, Zach Martin. And, uh, can we go to Mike or?
Yes, please. If you'll come in, come up and sign up. There should be a sign-in sheet.
Happy to do that. While I'm doing this, can we just celebrate the fact that it's not snowing or sleeting this week, this day anyway? And I know what you guys, but I'm excited about the weather.
It's pretty nice out.
Okay, signed in. So I don't know exactly, I'll just be very frank with you, I've never been here before to appeal before the Planning Commission to request rezoning. So if I misstep or don't provide all the information, feel free to ask, and I'm sure I will do my best to answer it. Or two of my colleagues, Ben Crosswhite and Earl Weaver, might be able to support the answer to that question.
Just lean into the microphone. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So, in general, as we've discussed, we've looked at this property a number of ways to determine what makes the most sense economically for the construction costs being where they are today, to develop the property and to kind of finish that, you know, Block B of Cornerstone. And in looking through, you know, the various options and the kind of the plan for this to be a mixed-use development, we really felt that the most economical usage that also provided a benefit to residents of Cornerstone, but also to the businesses within Cornerstone, would be a mixed-use structure that provided a commercial space of approximately 4,000 square feet, and then up to 12 condominium units that would be a single-family, you know, each one, and then sold after that. The, in looking at this project, we submitted a site plan, and since then, we've also evaluated the parking conditions inside of that area. We understand that there's a total of, I believe, 231 lots allocated in Block, spaces allocated in Block B. This would leave 30, take 30 units of the 60 that are currently remaining and leave a 30 space margin before hitting the allocated parking spaces in that area. In terms of completion of the project, we've submitted a site plan that has some of the landscaping ideas that we have on it, and what our plans are there, some of the approximated square footage, and the size and the layout of the structure itself. In terms of additional information, we'd also reached out, and I think as the technical review committee was kind enough, they made a number of comments. We looked into the stormwater with fire sprinkler LTV, and they believe that the suppression system within Cornerstone would more than suffice to cover the, any fire extinguishing needs that may accommodate as a result of putting in 12 additional units. With that, you'll do any questions or comments?
We might at some point, but thank you very much. You can, you can probably stay up there unless there's somebody else that would like to speak in favor of this.
If you guys want to.
Should we speak now, or should we like first?
Yeah, so, so Zach, you can take a seat if.
Great.
It sounds like we're going to have some other people. Thank you. If you'll sign in for us, please.
Yes, ma'am.
And state your name.
Good afternoon. My name's Earl Weaver. I know some of you, grown up here in Lynchburg for the most part, about all my life. I'm an older guy, but I've been around long enough to see a lot of the changes that are taking place in Lynchburg, and I'm proud to say that it's, they're beautiful and welcome changes. I know several folks over in Cornerstone, a lot over my children's age. It's so refreshing to see what's going on over there. And that's not the only area, of course, but it's just, it's just really pretty to see how much Lynchburg's evolved over the years. One of the reasons why I got involved with Mr. Crosswhite and Mr. Martin was that I wanted to be part of that possible change. That piece of property, that parcel of land, it's been sitting idle for some time. It's an opportunity to see children, young families, continue to move in over there as time goes on. You know, I'm also taxpayer of Lynchburg. I do live in the county, but my business is in the city, and I've been a taxpayer for, you know, 35 years. And I just see a potential for, obviously, continued growth there. Tax revenue that can be put back into several things, and you already know what those are, but additional salaries, fixing roads, bridges, et cetera. And I know y'all got a tough job, and we do really, we're very sensitive to what you guys do. But I am here in favor of it, and I'm very blessed and thankful to Mr. Crosswhite and Mr. Martin to be a part of it. So, anyway, I just wanted to be in here today to say thank you for the opportunity, and we just appreciate any and all support. Thank you.
Thank you. Were we missing a pin?
Yeah. Take it. Make it down.
I appreciate you having me today. As you know, I am in favor of this project. I've owned this lot for about five years now. I have been a resident of Lynchburg since I came here for school back in 2007, and stayed and love Lynchburg and love giving back to the community. I own Crosswhite Athletic Club in town, as well as MMG Burger Bar on Ward's Road, and we're also building a new aquatic center at Crosswhite Athletic Club. It's going to be one of the largest and nicest aquatic centers in the southwest Virginia area. And it just, I love giving back to the community, love giving back and seeing the community grow. I have about 30 employees, and I just think that this project specifically would, would do so much good to Lynchburg, so much good to Cornerstone community. I have several friends and family in Cornerstone, so I would do nothing to harm the way it's been and, and to make it, you know, any more of a, you know, or any toxic environment, I should say. And I just would love the support and would love to, to expand Cornerstone and, and make it a better place for young families like Earl, Mr. Weaver has said. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in, on behalf of this petition, in favor of this petition? Is there anybody here that speaks in opposition of this petition? If you'll please come forward. Make sure you sign in, please.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Mind if I take this thing off?
Yes.
I'm not going to expose anybody.
Okay.
And I hate those things.
My name is Albert Billingsley, speaking on behalf of Windsor Hills Neighborhood Association, which is right behind Cornerstone, and my house actually butts up against the Cornerstone property. As the neighborhood association, we do not approve of this proposal as it is. We are in opposition for a few reasons. First of all, it exceeds the agreed to limits that were already established several years ago. And that, if it is increased at this point, sets a precedent for other developers who may come along and want to add more of the same type of dwellings in Cornerstone. There are a couple of places on Collendale, I believe it is, on the 200 block, which is part of the View, and I'm sure that the View people would love to come in and add more dorms, for lack of a better word, to the site plans and those places that are currently sitting idle. And that's, would increase the numbers considerably more than what we are at right now. Parking for the proposed development, I believe is going to be a very, really big issue. If you've got 12 condominiums and a business or two, you're talking 30-plus cars at least. And if you ever come by there and look at the parking lot behind this property during the week, especially in the weekends, the popularity of the Mellow Mushroom, Iron Ale, and other establishments makes it very, very difficult to try to find any kind of parking there at all. So I'm sure that the people who live in the apartments right beside that find it very difficult for themselves already to try to find parking. The commercial minimum has not yet been made. That's something that we were actually kind of concerned at, about when it was first proposed, but actually, this has turned in quite a, a commercial bonanza, if you will. Mellow Mushroom, Iron Ale, the Maven Salon, Blue Eagle Credit Union, Edward Jones, a lot of different commercial sites are there already, and I'm glad that they're there. It seems to be a vibrant community because of that, and that's something that we would like to see more of. As an engineer, I understand limits. Former engineer, I took early retirement a few years ago, and now I sell insurance, which is a lot harder than I thought it was going to be. But I do understand limits, and there are limits that are set usually for a reason. And there are limits set now, and I hope that you will stay within those. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Swinton. I live on Morview Drive. I'm speaking today with the experience of a past planning commissioner and the Lynchburg citizen that would probably win any history contest if the sole topic was the history of Cornerstone. In my opinion, the proposed 12 units are a distance away, and quite frankly, will not materially impact me or many of my neighbors. So why am I here? The repercussions and the precedent set, that could have future direct implications for not only my neighbors, homeowners in Cornerstone, and I would advocate other developments for other citizens in other parts of the city. The traditional neighborhood development, also known as a TND, has three sections: neighborhood edge, transition area, and commercial core. Commercial core, on the site plans and the various sketch plans that had been submitted, also are called commercial core slash employment, and they have their minimums. In your staff report, it says the yields are anticipated, the yields are not to be anticipated, and it's unlikely that they will be reached. These yields are not to be anticipated, they are required. They're required under, when this was passed, under the TND, under the old zoning code, which has been, as I recall, rewritten, under section 35.1-43.5. And on the site plans, it even says ordinance requires that minimum. So that minimum commercial is clearly required. It's also for employment. Without that, you really truly don't have a mixed-use neighborhood. So think about that. You dilute commercial, you dilute employment, and I would maintain takeaway jobs, and that's not truly mixed use. So what we want to avoid is a scenario that, I'm going to jump across to another part of town, imagine Villa Maria. Something gets approved behind there. Years later, there's a new comprehensive plan, a revision of the zoning ordinance, and someone else comes in and says, "All we're asking to do is..." Homeowners, and I would have the right to know when something goes through the public process, that that's it. They need that certainty, and that's in part who I'm advocating for. It's, and I want them to be successful, by the way, I really do. And Iron and Ale and Mellow Mushroom and other commercial ventures have created a vibrant community, a vibrant business community. Go there on a weekend, it is amazing. It's fun to be able to say I live right behind Cornerstone, and I believe that there are plenty of opportunities if they can perhaps rethink and revision what are the commercial possibilities. So ironically, we're encouraging development, we just want it to be in line with the initial intent. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition of the petition? Would the presenters like to offer a rebuttal to the two opposing people? If somebody wants to come up? Zach, you want to come up?
Thank you. In terms of, I think that, while I respect our colleagues and friends and their, and their opinions on the opportunities that have been there, we have, Ben Crosswhite has, you know, looked at evaluation meth, or sorry, has looked at development plans for that lot for about five years now. We talked about a gymnasium, we looked at a number of other businesses. But, you know, right next door, there was an antique shop that didn't survive. The restaurant, the food that Mellow Mushroom is now, didn't survive. Mellow Mushroom started just, you know, in the last few months. And we also know that Steak 'n Shake looked like a big success in Lynchburg for about six months, and then it, you know, closed. And, you know, businesses are sometimes a hard run in these communities, and Lynchburg does a great job in the first few months of a new restaurant opening of keeping it very busy, and afterwards, you know, it moderates down. So I think that, well, I appreciate that those businesses are there, and they are somewhat successful, and I frequent Iron and Ale probably too many times a week, but the, to suggest that we go put another business in there, that would maybe be a restaurant or something to that effect. And if you look at maybe taking 100 spaces or something to go to Iron and Ale, or 100 spaces to go to Mellow Mushroom, you've only got 60 spaces left in terms of margin for that capacity today. You'd quickly be exceeding and really creating a traffic problem and creating a, with people coming and going throughout, multiple times throughout the day, by putting in a full-on restaurant or something that attracts a lot of attention, especially something that would take, you know, about 18,000 square feet or something to that effect. Whereas, or 16,000 square feet. When you look at the building plans we've submitted, you know, with some of the, we talked to the businesses around there, the pharmacy across the street, Iron and Ale, Mellow Mushroom, none of them were opposed to the development. They all thought that this would bring more clients to them. This would also bring people who don't necessarily have to get in their car and drive, so that reduces not only, you know, the environmental impact, but the walkability for that. Now, we also went door-to-door throughout the community of Cornerstone, which I think we should keep in mind what the residents of Cornerstone also want. And out of the 58 people we talked to, 42 agreed to sign a petition saying that they would, you know, support this development. And they thought that the, the petition actually read the, now, I have a couple, one copy here with me tonight, but the, that, you know, the eyesore of that current, you know, facility, that lot being unfinished and vacant was actually a bigger problem, given that it was the entrance to Cornerstone and having, you know, if you go into Cornerstone and you look at a vacant lot and you look at buildings that continuously transfer out in terms of what businesses, it actually sends the opposite message of this is an attractive community to live in. And so being able to develop it and have something that provides, you know, people that will be there constantly and have some business, you know, light-use office space, retail space, that would enable you to have people continuously kind of finish that front row, if you will, in Cornerstone and really give a nice, you know, facelift to it. And so that was some of the concerns we heard from some of the people. Certainly, I, I mean, there's going to be people on every side of every issue, and that's okay. We see that playing out nationally, locally, and every other part of our society. But I think this particular development, really, we tried to target something that, you know, if we go put in a business, if we put in a gym, for instance, you know, Crosswhite, I can't tell, but I tend Crosswhite's gym and work out a couple of times a week, most of the, most of the time right then. And when we go there, there's 70 or 80 cars parked in his lot at almost any time of the day, just to participate in the gym. So if we added a gym to that or a satellite campus, we look at, again, coming very close to exceeding the parking capacity of the lot, but you need to build something fairly large to be able to justify the build cost on that property. So the realities of the economics of development of this facility, of this lot, really yields you to a mixed-use development that has condominiums in, and light commercial that doesn't hang and have a spike at lunch and dinner and breakfast times. So, I think that would be the beginning of this. I think we've, we've looked at the parking, as I said before, and I actually have, and I'll be happy to pass out a copy, slightly amended revised site plan, but on this, we basically have that, you know, of the existing parking spaces that were allocated for that area, there'd be 239 spaces that are required in Block B, available based on the square footage of the residential and the commercial space that's there. Of that, we would take up with our development 209 total. There's 179 that are currently occupied. So if you add 179 plus the 30, you get to the 209, and then that leaves you still a margin of parking. So we think this solution from a parking not impacting the businesses that are there in a negative way, also providing a venue for light commercial, for boutique shops, for instance, for the residents of Cornerstone, provides a kind of a win-win for everybody involved. And we appreciate your consideration of that. Any questions?
Well, I'm going to ask if, if the opposing group, anybody from the opposing group, would like to come back up and offer rebuttal to the rebuttal?
Yeah, the only thing I would have to say to that is, it's not up to Planning Commission or to City Council to guarantee someone a profitable business. I was hoping that we would look more at the guidelines that are set aside, that are in place, and helping them work within that, rather than letting them work outside of it. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, have any questions?
Tom, I've, I've got a question, and quite candidly, this, this sort of issue of setting a precedent is really concerning to me. And could you just give us a brief history, because you've got such a great institutional perspective? Could you just give us a brief history, if you will, of, of when exceptions like this have been made around town and what the ramifications have been?
This, this one is actually a first for me in, in a TND, in, in exceeding the unit counts. I think the last one that comes to mind where there was a specific count was over on Timberlake Road, which council ultimately denied behind the sheets, that development. So, you know, honestly, I can't disagree with anything that either side has, has said. I think that when this came through from the beginning, it was 1,000 units. And those units were distributed throughout the development, and there were 600 allocated for multifamily, and that was the max, and those were used up in 2017, so it was kind of like first come, first served, right? So really what this is about is exceeding those unit counts. And if you do it now, you know, you're not bound to approve them later, but it does make it a little harder. All right? Now, far as the traffic, the infrastructure, will it support 12 units? Yeah, absolutely, it will. But it's just kind of a matter of what was said in the beginning versus what is being requested now, and that's more of a, that's more of a political issue, I think.
Well, I'm curious just why you're recommending approval? I mean.
Again, it's a political issue. Will the infrastructure support the extra 12 units? Yes. Do I think that they will have a difficult time meeting the 100,000 square foot minimum of commercial space in the future if you do this? Yes. Could they? Maybe. I mean, if you look at this one building, they're right at 80,000 square feet now, basement level, so basically four levels at roughly 4,000 square feet, that's 16,000 square feet. 80 plus 16, you're right at 96,000, right? So you're in those thresholds that were originally planned. So you're in those thresholds that were originally planned, all right? So if you allow the majority of this building to be converted to residential, you're not going to get the commercial.
I always respect what, how you feel, and so I still am just, I guess I'm not clear as to why you're recommending approval, just because what I'm hearing is you're kind of giving, you're giving me more of a doubt of approving this because of the thresholds and because of, you know, not meeting, not meeting the requirement. So I guess I'm still wanting to hear from you why you are recommending approval.
Because the infrastructure that's in place, I mean, it's 12 units out of 1,000. What percentage is that, that's like...
Like less than two or something, yeah.
Yeah, not next to anything. So in the grand scheme of things, are the 12 units going to really be that detrimental to the development? No. So that's why we recommended approval of it. But as you note in the report, we did caution you about the ramifications of what would occur if you did. So it was like, yes, but you need to think about these things. And that's what I'm recommending that you weigh today. You know, the T and D ordinance requires an 80-20 split in terms of land area for commercial versus the residential. You know, you can't have a map, you can't have over 70% of one unit type. They, they'll meet all of that. So it really boils down to what was said in the beginning, right? 1,000 units. And they used all of those.
In their letter, in the letter that they wrote, they, they state that they believe this is the last undeveloped commercial lot. Are, are there any other vacant lots that, that somebody could come to us at some point down the road and ask for another increase?
I believe I referenced two in the report. One is across Greenview Drive between the convenience store and the pharmacy, and the other one was located at 12, 101 or 2 Cornerstone Street.
So there's two, the two vacant, like I think it's plat, or it's parcel 419 and 420, those are designated green spaces, they're not vacant?
Yeah, if I can get the map.
Property.
Yeah, it, it shows up on the page eight of the, the two, the two parcels, the two stop.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull my math up, for some reason.
Let's see how we can call them to something like...
I know.
Bear dirt.
You're too grassy there.
You know.
Yeah, so this is really the core area here, right? So you see, you've got this vacant lot here, and you've got this vacant lot here. This is the 1240, this is the parcel that's in question today. These two are, they're, they're owned by The View, so they're probably future buildings.
But they... They couldn't build unless they came, they came to us, correct?
No, our, no, our unit counts, our 600 unit counts include what has been constructed and what has been approved to be constructed for site plans. And one of the things we told them was, is, okay, if you don't want to go through this process, just go to another property owner and get them to void part of their site plan.
And get them to what?
Void a, a site plan that showed the units. Where obviously nobody's going to do that, all right? So, yeah.
So could The View, could The View build something there?
Yeah.
Without coming to us? I mean, it, I guess I'm confused.
Well, they've all been approved.
They've been approved.
They're within that 600?
So it would be in the 600 units.
Got, okay, thank you, I get it, I understand. But there are two, there are two other vacant, vacant lots that...
Could be developed for commercial.
Could potentially be, okay, I just wanted to make that clear.
Correct.
Any other?
One of the questions is, can we do it at a different angle? One of the things that came up in the write-up, Tom, was checking with the city attorney to see if there were any ramifications for the HOA contracts. Did that come back as a, as a no, that wasn't a concern?
Yes, the city attorney... The city attorney gave me the opinion that we could not require them to get approval from the homeowner associations to file for a conditional use permit on their property.
That's where I'm going with that is...
So it's kind of strange, because this affects overall development, right?
That's right, that's what I was going.
But they only needed, you know, they didn't need to get somebody else's permission to file for it.
Because I guess, to that point, if we're talking about mixed use, then without the, without the commercial use, we don't have, in the most technical form, a mixed-use property. We've essentially over-residential then, if you will. Is that true?
Over-residential.
So in other words, you've got more residential than you've got, if you're not going to meet your commercial meeting, that minimums.
Well, it was always intended to be primarily residential, but there were the thresholds that were set.
But with these minimums in place...
Right.
You're, you're planning on, I mean, so, I realize it doesn't matter, but if I'm a homeowner signing in, I'm planning on that amount of, of, of commercial being in place, correct?
You could assume that, yes.
You know, we've had a couple of cases recently where, you know, people bought property with an idea of what the neighborhood was going to look like, and I guess that's made me a little bit more sensitive about even something as slight as this, particularly given, given the precedents that are set.
You know, Bob, that's a, that's a good perspective. I guess what comes to mind, though, is if the HOA was concerned about that, I think we would have heard about it. And I take Mr. Martin's representation to be truthful, that they sort of polled the neighborhood, perhaps informally, but that they didn't get a bunch of pushback.
Sure.
In anticipation of this meeting, I had sort of been listening carefully or waiting expectantly from, to, to hear negative comments. And, you know, I remember Mr. Billingsley from previous issues that have come up, and a man of high credibility and, and, you know, professionalism, and of course, it goes without saying, with, you know, with, with Jerry, always good to see him again, and always good to get his perspective on things. But I guess if I had heard the HOA or other, and I don't know if anybody else has gotten any communication from the HOA or any of the, and I purposely went out and have eaten at the Mellow Mushroom, I've eaten there before, but the Mellow Mushroom and, and Iron and Ale both in the last 10 days, just to sort of soak up the ambiance, so to speak, and walk around, sort of look. I think if, if, to Bob's point, if the HOA was concerned about what was going on, I think we would have heard more about it. And I guess, you know, I guess, Bob, I don't know if that is responsive to your, your issue or not, but I think it does speak volumes that we haven't heard from anybody at the HOA, that they're, that they're concerned about the, the proposal.
Well, on the other side of it, they're not proposing building something up next door to someone's apartment. And when we hear all this pushback, it's normally because it's in someone's backyard. We have that NIMBY effect. Here we have on a major thoroughfare in a commercial area, and no one really cares. I mean, there's only one apartment that's right close to it.
Yeah.
And the people there, for now, I've been there several times, they were more intent on getting in and out and getting to class.
Well, I mean, the, the HOA may be happy that, that it's not going to be as heavily commercialized as, as has been anticipated. I don't know, it's just a matter of speculation, but, but I do know that there hasn't been any, it hasn't been any negative pushback.
Sure.
So...
But I, I, I still go back on that, there was a cap set for a reason, and that cap has been reached. And I'm concerned about the, once you make that exception, who says, you know, somebody else is going to come in, want the apartment someplace else, right there in the immediate area? And we've established that precedent that, well, you know, these are the caps, but we can always waive them. And what does that really mean to the city?
Tom, can I sit there?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, so, you know, I guess one of my thoughts, and I did speak with a, a business owner who wasn't keen on having more apartments, he said, I would like to do more business to business, and we need more business, and I do think there's more businesses than gyms and restaurants. I think that's, you know, there are opportunities elsewhere, we, we do see them all around town, but I think one of the things that this reminds me of is what we saw happen on Timberlake. And one of the things that I got feedback from Council is, is this idea of proffers is put there for a reason. And, you know, while we don't make the ultimate choice, that's something Council does, I feel like it's important to stick to the agreed-upon designation. This is how this property was developed. This is how the developers sold properties, and this is how people bought properties. So I think that's a consideration I'm thinking about in my head right now.
Yeah, you know, and that's, as I said in my first comment, that's really what concerns me the most, is, you know, we have, we try to be consistent, and, but I also see a piece of property that's basically sat there for five years and not been able to be developed. And, you know, while I don't want to just see willy-nilly exceptions done, and while I just don't want to see willy-nilly development done, on the other hand, when you realize I think there's a pent-up demand there, maybe, maybe the other units haven't been built out like they should, but I think from a exception viewpoint, this may be a time when an exception may be in order, because it's a, it's a hot area, I think there's a built-up demand for some more units out there, nothing has been done with the property. It sits there now for, for five-plus years. You know, I don't know Mr. Crossright, but I'm sure he's tried to market this, and I'm not asking for a response, but just knowing the development business, I'm sure he's, because he's a hustler, that's obvious that he's out there, you know, being active in his, in his business. I'm sure if he thought there was a better use for the property, he could, it would have, it would have happened. So, you know, I'd like to see the property be more fully utilized, and I'm, and for those reasons, I'm going to vote in favor of the proposal. But I think we also have to send a strong message that just because we've done an exception here, we as a planning commission and presumably City Council, if they would accept the exception, have got to be firm that this is maybe an exception to the exceptions. But I, I am going to vote in favor of the proposal as it's done.
I still see commercial use there, that the right person has not seen it. I mean, there is potential, commercial potential right there, that I don't think people are really looking at. Because when you look around there, you got lots of people, maybe they will need a small office away from where they actually live. The, the potential to put in micro offices, to have a brick-and-mortar address for your business, as hopefully we get out from underneath this pandemic, so we're no longer working at home, you could probably put 10, 15 offices, micro offices in there, and rent them out.
Yeah, I, I agree with the mixed use, having, meeting those thresholds of business versus residential. Also, just to follow up the exceptions, I mean, the, the proffer revisiting at Timberlake behind Sheets was to address some clerical issues, and we all recommended approving that, and Council unanimously shot it down and criticized us over it. So if we're not going to address clerical issues for proffer revisiting, then that's a pretty well-defined bar for not revisiting proffers. So I think, I, I think that, as was indicated earlier, these are there for a reason, and, you know, it's, going back and revisiting them just opens the door to too many, too many things.
Well, I'm not going to be able to support the, this petition, because I feel there is a use for that property. It's just the right person with the right vision, the right dream, has not driven down and said, hey, I can do that there. I think that potential still exists.
You know, I, I, I think, you know, I always look at the highest and best use of a property, and, and I can see that that could be the highest and best use for this property, and, and I want any, any person that owns a property to, to, to get that. And so I guess, you know, and it's, I agree, property taxes would be great for the, for the community, that we're always looking for more housing, you're going to be putting in some commercial spots. So it, like, I, I see all of the benefits, but, but I'm trying to outweigh the, I'm trying to, to look at the, the benefits versus us not following through with the original stated thresholds. And that, that is my one, that's, that's the one hesitation, and I'm, and I'm really interested in hearing everybody and, and trying to weigh those, to weigh it, it's really tough for me.
Well, I'd, I'd have to quote a Marine buddy of mine, I'm sorry, it's not you, Tom, but if it wasn't the minimum, if the minimum wasn't good enough, then it wouldn't be the minimum. So they established a rule, and it's got to be good enough. If not, then the rules got to be changed. But they saw that this was a minimum, and that should be good enough to go forward on, and we should at least continue on with that.
And perhaps another way of looking at it, too, is, we oftentimes talk about maintaining the character of a neighborhood.
Yep.
But we don't really talk about maintaining the neighborhood of a business. And in some sense, those minimums are, I'm looking at them kind of like you would a, a shopping mall. I mean, you have anchors, you have, you know, you have traffic, it's generated by not only the individuals, but the sum of what you have in there. And I think in this situation, thinking about the business neighborhood, if you will, that those minimums are striking against that kind of objective, or at least that's the way I'm looking at it. And I just, at this point, that, and then the situation of, I'm sort of in Tom's camp. I mean, we're talking about 12 units, we're not talking about...
Right, right.
You know, make or break, but I think from our position, and somebody's already brought it up, I think Tom brought it up, you know, we're looking at, at what's the best way to, to address this native, this type of an issue. We certainly have talked about a number of places that we wish we could go back and undo some decisions that are made in the past. And I don't, I think we've got to do the best we can for Greenview Drive right now, so that we don't end up with something that we're going to feel bad about later on. And that's a macro issue, not a, not a 12-units issue. It's a mixed-use situation, their minimum's in place, there was an expectation for, for this property that I believe we need to meet.
I think the biggest irony thing for me was that, I did not realize the entire Cornerstone project is still Zone R1, but that's a topic for another day. Because it's definitely not R1. Because it's definitely not R1.
Any other comments? Tom, do you have any other comments on the phone? Tom Rogers?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Is there a motion?
I believe that, based on the conversation, that we deny the proposal was written, we deny the, the change in, however this was written.
Any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Would it help if I raised voting?
Is that, is that's to ring ring?
Yeah, for, for the record now.
So the motion carries?
That's five to one, right? One out.
And one extension, yeah.
So obviously, this is not your final destination. You will take this to City Council and be able to, to make your case, and, and, and it'll, it'll be in front of them. So I appreciate you coming. Good luck. Is there any old business? Do we do that? Old business, new business? Old business?
When's our next meeting gonna be? I didn't see anything in the paper today. 24th. Good time.
Of March? You can move to adjourn.
I'll, I'll second it, since I think I'm gonna be successful this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.